Wanted to share about an event that I attended on July 13th. I was invited to participate in the Youth Civic Leadership Institute at the Dole Center. Melissa was also there that evening, and that is such a fun event. You get to meet with students from, high school students, rising seniors from across the state who have been nominated by a staff member in the Social Studies Department at their high schools, and then they have to go through a rigorous application process to be selected to participate. They come to Lawrence for, I think it's two and a half days of intensive leadership and service training. They take a trip to the state Capitol, they meet with legislators, they do a bunch of other activities. They have a dinner one evening where they invite elected officials from across the community as well as other people who are involved in public service, and you get to have dinner with a number of these students and talk about, they end up asking you questions about how did you get involved in public service? How is it that you do what you do? And it's just always a really cool event because you meet some amazing students and, you know, get to share and answer questions and talk about what a great job it is to be a school board member, which was a lot of fun. So I really enjoyed that. Also, I wanted to highlight three upcoming KASB events I wanted to make sure everybody on the board is aware of. The first one is every summer, the KSB advocacy staff usually does an advocacy tour. This year, they're calling it their New Day in Education Advocacy Tour. There's going to be a stop in Lawrence, and I will be attending that session as the Region One Vice President. It's going to be on August 10th at 10:00 a.m. at the College and Career Center. So all board members, administrators, district staff, anybody in the community is invited to attend that, candidates, school board candidates, as well as local legislators to participate in a conversation about advocacy around education in Kansas. The second event, they also do a series of what they call regional meetings in the fall. This year's fall regional meeting, which is more go and hear about things that are going on, upcoming plans, legislative agenda, that sort of thing. That's going to be August, or I'm sorry, October 2nd in Baser. I'm not sure what time that event is. They haven't announced a time for it yet, but if you're interested, you can follow up on that. And then for board members who haven't done it yet, or new board members that will be joining us after the November elections, KSB does a new board member training, and this year, their session that's in Topeka is on January 12th. So I highly encourage new incoming board members to attend that. It's really, a really good orientation to a number of issues related to board service. I'm not sure I've covered all of my announcements here. Just a couple small things. We all have new microphones. They do not have mute buttons on them, so they're on all the time through the meeting. In addition, you may have noticed when we made the motion for executive session tonight, it was worded a little bit differently. There have been some changes in the Kansas Open Meetings Act that have gone into effect that require us to say a subject matter and a, as well as a justification in our motions for executive session. So those motions will look a little bit different, and it's because of the changes in, recent changes in the statute. Committee assignments, I am working with Anna and Dawn to put together a little more comprehensive information about the committees and site councils in terms of how often they meet, where they meet, when, if we can find out that information, and then expectations about what they would like to see, you know, if they want a board member at every meeting, if they've expressed that sort of interest to us. Hoping to have all of that put together maybe by the end of this week, get it out to board members, and if you could take a look at that right away and turn it back around. I'd really like to make the appointments to all the site councils in particular before the end of this month, so that as the site councils have their first meetings in September, everybody knows when and where and can attempt to attend if it's possible. So with that being said, I wanted to share, the last thing is I wanted to share a video, this is a video from the National School Board Association. I actually viewed this video at my last KASB board meeting. One of our past presidents of the association is a board member at NSBA, Frank Henderson. He shared this with us, and I just, I thought it was really, really well done and kind of spoke to me because of a number of things going on in our political environment right now about why, why the service that school board members provide is so important. So Julie's going to play that.
Because we are committed to the children of this country. And we believe that every single child should have the opportunity to reach their potential. We understand that education is the foundation of our democracy. And that an educated public is an informed public. It is my dream that we as a society will recognize the transformative power of great public education. Public schools can be the great equalizer. Regardless of poverty, ethnicity, or situation in life, an effective teacher and supportive school can open up the world for all students. Honestly, it's the best, hardest, most rewarding, most emotional, most frustrating, and the most inspiring job anyone could ever do. We're producing incredible engineers, IT techs, authors, doctors, and more. We have waiting lists for students from other countries to come to America, just so they can experience a solid American education. My sincere hope is that public education will be viewed and supported as an investment in our children's future and our country's future. The knowledge that my decisions play an important role in the future of many children is what motivates me. And I'm humbled to be able to play a small role in helping them succeed in school and We do this job to see our students grow, succeed, and overcome. To see the smiles on seniors' faces as they walk across the stage to be handed their diploma. We show up for our students because education is foundational to solving the world's issues. Because strong public schools transform lives.
So I just really liked the message, the foundational nature of education, the transformative nature of education, and why we do the jobs that we do and put the time into it that we do for no pay, although in some places they get paid, I was learned recently. But in Kansas, we don't. Why what we do is so important and why we commit the time to do it. I also liked the message of education being an investment, and there's a really great report, if you're interested in seeing it from KSB, I actually posted it on my school board member Facebook page, on K-12 education as an investment. And that's really a message that they're trying to communicate to our communities right now, particularly given that there is some pushback being planned to the tax increases that were passed this last session, along the lines of, you know, we spend too much money, we're wasting money. KSB's response to that is no, the money that you spend on public schools is an investment. It's an investment in our future, and it pays off in ways that are very clearly measurable in terms of increased earnings, decreases in poverty rates. And it ties that increased funding to, the states that have increased funding have higher post-secondary attainment levels, and then it results in quite a bit of difference in terms of poverty rates and lifetime earnings. So I just wanted to mention that report because I think it was a really great piece that would allow us to help inform that conversation as board members. So thank you for your indulgence to take a few minutes to talk about those things. And that's all I have. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stepplefield for the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening. I also have a few things that I would like to mention. First, due to the Kansas Supreme Court's continued deliberations about the adequacy and constitutionality of the new school formula finance, the budget approval process for the school district across the state has been delayed. We anticipate receiving state budget forms within 24 hours of the court's decision. In the meantime, your approval of the budget for publication and the annual public hearing have been postponed, so we can anticipate probably a couple of special meetings to address that. On July 12th, the district shared a news release about the Kansas State Board of Education First Post-Secondary Progress Report. This report is a part of the state board's Kansas Can vision for education that includes measuring results in new and additional ways. The report includes data from the National Student Clearinghouse, which tracks students who enroll and persist and graduate from more than 3,000 colleges and universities in around the country. The report provides a baseline look at the post-secondary movement of our high school graduates. We can plan and monitor and track this data each year while keeping in mind the missing components of the report, including, the report does not track individuals who enlist in the military, attend private college and universities such as Baker and others. It also does not reflect who goes to study abroad, who successfully enters into the workforce. So while this report provides some valuable information and works towards our district and mission to commit it to all students achieving at high levels, there are some missing parts of the data, and as a district, we will continue to look at those reports and analyze where our graduates are to try to provide a complete picture. I also want to publicly congratulate Peaslee Tech Director Marvin Hunt on his retirement and comment briefly on the district's positive relationship with the Peaslee Tech Center. We have partnered with the Chamber, the Economic Development Corporation, the city and county in area post-secondary institutions since the initial planning of Peaslee Tech. As you know, our College and Career Center shares a campus with Peaslee Tech. The district has a reputation, a representation on the Peaslee Board of Directors and has worked collaboratively with these partners to grow our career in technical education and training programs to meet local demands. Our role has been of one of support by providing instructors and moving existing equipment from our high school to the tech center for these programs. Peaslee Tech allows our high school students to take its classes, and we reciprocate by enabling adults enrolled to take their classes through the College and Career Center. When our high school students are receiving college credit through the enrollment at either location, they pay for the course fees. The district has a great relationship with Peaslee Tech and believes this partnership benefits the Lawrence community and especially our high school students and adults seeking career and technical education and training. I want to take the time to congratulate our district and specifically our Finance Department Executive Director Kathy Johnson and the HR Department Supervisor Susan Fowler for successful completion of a recent IRS audit. That's no easy task, and the auditor mentioned that it was clear that the Lawrence Public School staff knows their stuff. I just want to say that our audit concluded way sooner than other districts, so again, thank you Kathy and Susan Fowler pulling all that together. It was tremendous effort, and they didn't probe any further, not that there was anything to hide, but it was so good, they said no need to. I want to invite school families and community to join us for our annual back-to-school tradition of hosting a festival of making creativity called Capabularium. This free all ages event will be held from 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, August 5th at Free State High School. You may find a schedule of activities offered on our website. Best of luck to our high school student athletes who are competing this week in the USA Track and Field National Junior Olympics at Rock Chalk Park, and welcome to the thousands of visitors in the community for those events. Also want to welcome Elvin Jones from the Journal World. Joanna is on vacation, so Elvin is joining us tonight. You may notice some improvements in the boardroom tonight, including new audiovisual equipment. For the first time, we're broadcasting in hi-def, just FYI. Midco channel 26. Board meetings also may be viewed on our YouTube livestream link on the website. And finally, the district learned in recent weeks of the deaths of a student and two staff members. I want to extend my deepest sympathy to the families of Free State High School Junior Dalton Hess and Special Education pair educators Valentina Russell and Debbie Mosher.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is patron commentary. Do we have any this evening? Okay, we'll move on to board commentary. Anyone have anything they'd like to share? No? I took up all the time. Okay, great. Well, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed. The item or items removed are voted on separately, and before we vote, we have our retirement to recognize this evening.
Okay, we'd like to recognize Paula Hatcher for 23 years of service as a nurse in our school district. Thank you, Paula.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second? Okay.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, next up, we will move on to reports for this evening. The first of our reports is on the Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, OrKESA, with Jerry Kimball, Assistant Superintendent of Leading Learning and Technology, and Terry McEwen, Director of Assessment, Research, and Accountability.
So we haven't tried the new devices here, so we're going to find out how this works. All right, we're there. So tonight, we'd like to talk to you about the Kansas Education System Accreditation. And earlier this evening, when we had our work session, you received a nice poster about it, which I think will be helpful as we move forward. So the Kansas State Department or Board of Education has been looking at the education system and how we accreditate our schools, and they decided to make some changes. They've been working on this for several years, and so this fall, they've come out with what is called KESA, K-E-S-A. You'll be hearing a lot about it, so we're just going to give you a view of what KESA looks like. So if you will look, I guess that this would be the easiest place, or if you have your chart with you, the Board of Education said, why are we doing this in the first place? Because they want us to lead the world in the success of each student, a lot of personalized learning. They have actually defined what does a successful high school graduate look like, and they have given us a definition. So what are we going to do to have successful graduates? And they have laid that out in, we'll talk more about that, but social-emotional, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, high school graduation, and post-secondary success that Dr. Stepplefield just spoke of. How are we going to do it? We have some evidence-based practices that we will be following in order to get to that goal. And finally, we will remain in compliance of federal laws and regulations, anything that the feds put out that we need to abide by, and that does include some of our assessments. So if we look at the results, the good news is, and you can take a sigh of relief, we're doing a lot of this already, which I think speaks highly to all of you and the direction that you have led us so far. So the emotional, social-emotional factors will be measured locally. We're doing that with CI3T. Kindergarten readiness, the state is looking at a measurement, they're calling it a snapshot, not just a test. They are working with some companies to get a rate which would then be passed on to the schools. We can either go with what they give us, or we could do something on our own, but we will be looking at kindergarten readiness. I suspect we will be working much closer with our preschool programs in the community to make sure that our students are ready for school. Individual plans of study, Patrick Kelly started working with our high school and middle school counselors last year on the individual plans of study. We have things in place, and so we will be working harder and improving on those as we go. High school graduation rate, we don't know what the number is going to be, but we suspect they'll probably start about 85% is what they want the graduation rate to be. So we're doing well there, but as always, we can continue to improve. And then the post-secondary success, that's going to be the new one. I can see that we are going to be working much closer with universities, talking about what it is going to take to make sure that kids are successful, also vocational programs. We will also be talking to military, and what do kids need to be successful when they get there? So I think it's going to form more of a collaboration as we work with more, more post-secondary entities. So Terry will talk to you more about that in just a few minutes.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Maybe it's better for Terry, but I guess I'm curious. So if we're helping students identify individual plans of study, will they be able to then define their own post-secondary success, or are we supposed to be defining that for them as a state?
So that's a, that's a great question. Isn't that what you're supposed to see on TV? That's a great question.
Thank you.
So there is, there is a definition, and it's a rather narrow definition in some regards. And I think what, what the commissioner has talked about is that if we look at future trends, if we look at, if we project out, that 70%, at least 70 to 75% of the jobs that are high-paying, high-paying careers, et cetera, require at least a two-year degree in a college or in a vocational school. And so the post-secondary success is sort of framed around that 70%, needing us to get to a 70% rate of students who not only go to a college, but go back a second year. And that's where this gets really interesting to start measuring. It's a five-year set of averages, but what they're looking at right now is who went in year one, and then who returns in year two, okay? And then finally, four to five years out, who actually completes a degree? So that's kind of what they're measuring, and that's what this clearinghouse actually looks at. What it's missing is 30 to 35% of the data because we have students who go straight to military and are highly successful. That often leads to a great deal of post-secondary college and/or career training. We have people who go quite successfully to work. We have, you know, we're not necessarily in Western Kansas farming community, but a lot of kids go straight to work, other family farm and do quite well financially. And so it does not capture any of that data. So I had a phone call with the Deputy Commissioner the other day, and I said, so how are we supposed to quantify that? And he said, well, districts will have to kind of figure out a way that we're going to develop a tracking, if you will, mechanism to find out what, how many of our kiddos went straight to military, how many of them go straight to work, et cetera. So that's a foggy little piece right now. What they will give us on an ongoing basis is the tracking of the students who go to a university or a post-secondary institution that participates in this particular clearinghouse, okay? So again, and Dr. Stepplefield mentioned this, Baker is not one of those institutions. And I know we have a number of students who go there, so they're not captured in the data set, and so those are the things we're going to have to struggle with as this moves forward.
I have one question about that data set. We know it doesn't include Baker. To what degree are the vocational schools in this area participants in that?
That's an excellent question. I don't know exactly which ones, but I can go back to KSD and ask them that question.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would be curious to know that. I mean, because that is one of the things that they're, that they're, and, you know, community colleges, like does Johnson County participate? Does, you know, other community colleges in this region, do they participate?
Johnson County does for sure, but what other ones do, I am not certain.
Thank you.
And they're working to get them all on board, and they have said they know that this has flaws, and if we know someone went to Baker, then we can count them if we know that. But they know that there are flaws in this beginning, so, but they're trying to get everyone on board. So if we look at what are the practices that are going to get us to the results, it's, again, the things that we've been working on here in Lawrence, relationships, relevance, responsive culture, and rigor. And those four Rs have rubrics attached to them. And so what's going to happen in this first year is our building leadership teams, our site councils, and we talked earlier about getting site council more input, our district site council more input, they will be looking at the rubrics that our building leadership teams have put out there, and we will be identifying two areas that we really need to work on. We're on the hook for all of them, but we need to identify the two that we will really move forward on. The last one, results, does not have a rubric attached to it, because if you do the first four, then you will have the effective results. So we have put the rubrics into a Google Doc for our building leadership teams so that we can start to collect that data and quantify that.
I'm sorry, so is it a rubric or a scale?
It, it's kind of like a scale. It has, well, let me show you here. Whoops. I guess that hyperlink won't work on here, I'm sorry. So it has different categories, like have you reached this? If you have reached the relationship category, and it has, with parents, with students, and with community. So if you've reached it, what's the evidence? How can you show us that you have reached it? If you're just working towards it and you know that, what is it that you need to get there? So that's in all of those categories. So that's in all of those categories.
It was like similar to like Marzano and Danielson?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can I ask a quick question about that? So at what point in the year does the site council and the staff, like, look at that and make those determinations? Because it does seem as though if we just did goal setting, and we're having all of this, like, goal-setting information, and then we have individual buildings doing that kind of thing, having that all-
We discussed this too, yes.
Come together.
How important this is going to be to you. Right, so they need to do all of those rubrics. We have discussed in our world when we would like to have this completed. We would like to have the rubrics completed first semester before we leave on winter break because then we will have our visiting team in the spring. That gives Teri time to get things together and all of us to get that information together. But I can see where this would be great information for the board as well, to see where, where this-
Principal utilizing it for strategic planning over next year.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Okay.
Right. So here we are. Last year was the zero year. Nothing really had to be done. This year, what has to be done are the rubrics. And we will also be bringing in our visitation team in the spring. They will come to start working with us to see the two areas that we are going to be working on as we move forward. Now, you can enter in the cycle anywhere that you would like to. We would like to enter just on the first year. Go through the entire process. Go slowly and do it correctly. It's not a race, so we want to do it correctly and enter at that first year. So teams that will be involved in this will be our building leadership teams, building site councils. Now, they may not fill out the rubric, but they would sure give input into what they're seeing, especially on the family and community areas. Our district leadership team, again, they would look at our results and give input as well. District site council, and then the outside visitation team. Just last week, they sent out a list of people that are trained to be on these visitation teams. I'll tell you, I think there are maybe five or six of us in the district that have been trained to do this. Not because we just really wanted to go out there and do it, but we wanted to know about it. So we felt that the training was beneficial. So they've released that so we can start looking at who we might like to have as our chairperson and get that team together so that they can come in the spring.
Is this team from the State Department?
No, it would be other school district leaders.
Okay. So will we have district staff that go to other districts to be our visitation teams?
They're kind of having a shortage, so I suspect we will, yes. So as they do the rubrics, they suggest you start with the relevance rubric. They suggest it'll take about 35 minutes for each rubric to be done. As we looked at it, we thought up to an hour, we think, for each rubric. If you're having those good conversations, we really thought it could take up to an hour. So that's why we want to get this rolling right away so principals can start working with their building leadership teams. I don't think you would want to do all four of them at one setting. So they could move that on out. Teri was going to conclude by visiting with you about what he just visited with you about.
Yeah, I kind of visited with you about some of the takeaways. Once upon a time, Kansas had a pretty robust accreditation system called the Quality Performance Accreditation. And it was really based on quality criteria as well as performance. But over the years, as you remember the stairway to heaven with no child left behind, it boiled down to, did you make your AYP target, yes or no? And then that determined whether you were accredited. This is an attempt to move completely away from that and to begin to look yet again at those things that are really important. And I think the commissioner's vision is to look at these areas of social-emotional, kindergarten readiness, individual plans of study, high school graduation, which is highly important, but then what happens after that? And so that's why the post-secondary success piece comes in. The other thing is, it does not mention, and you'll not see anywhere on the chart that you were given or anywhere else in the literature, that it says the score on the state assessments. However, the state assessments will still be a part of our culture. They will be a way that we measure student outcomes. But we move from a capital A accountability with those to a lowercase a accountability with those because we know that it is just one score, just one time, in a student's life. It is not the end-all, be-all that it was made out to be from essentially 2002 until 2014. So we're really happy with this. There's going to be some, there's going to be some bumps in the road. There's going to be some things that we'll wonder about, we'll need some answers for. But I think in the main, you'll see that this is a really robust accreditation system. And having been on the committee that initialized this work way back, I can't remember, but six, eight years ago, whenever we started this, the debate was, do we accredit schools, continue to do that? Or should we be looking bigger? Should we accredit districts? Because if you're looking at the district level, then everybody's contributing to the whole, and it makes more sense. And so that's the reason for going to this district-level accreditation as opposed to building by building.
Right, anybody have any questions?
This is kind of a bigger question than just KESA, but how does the Kansas College and Career Ready Standards kind of mesh with the Kansas CAN and KESA to an extent at this point?
You want to?
Well, I think that the state has done so much research about what is going to be needed. As they had the Kansas CAN, they looked at what are the things that we need. I think that it meshes very well. It's the same ideas behind it. So I don't feel like there's a disconnect at all with that.
So it overlays the college and career standards, essentially. Is that fair?
Yes, that would be a fair, that would be a fair depiction. The standards, the college career standards really are outcome statements. We, by a certain point in time, students should know and be able to do X. And so in order to get students to be college and career-ready, which is the goal here, and it should be their choice, which they are, we would need to make sure that we are following those outcome statements. So it is a, that is the benchmarking along the way to determine whether all learning is on track. And so they, those mesh together, although it's not, it's not as crystal clear as it might be, but it is all running in the background. And the standards are the ways that we accomplish the outcomes.
Any other questions?
I guess I had one on the rubric. So each school does these four rubrics in these four areas. Does the district kind of do a meta-analysis where we do a rubric just around the district as well?
Yes. Absolutely. And the schools can, so if we, let's say we, it looks like it's relevance and responsive culture. Those are the two areas. Then the school can say, yes, we will focus on those, and we also feel like we need to work on relationships too. So they could add something if they wanted to. But it really is systems thinking, district-wide.
Great, thank you very much.
Glad.
Okay, our second report this evening, Student Fee Waivers and Lost Property Charges, with Jerry Kimball, Assistant Superintendent of Leading Learning and Technology, David Cunningham, Executive Director of Human Resources and Chief Legal Counsel, and Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance.
Good evening. Tonight, we're bringing to you kind of a guide to administrative procedures specifically related to the student fees and charges policy. And the primary focus is going to be the lost property section, but the policy does have some additional things. So basically, the policy addresses the types of fees charged and assessed, and you approved that schedule of fees, July 3rd. It also talks in the policy, you know, that the district has a system for accounting and disposing fees and charges, classification of students' exemption fees and charges, lost property, a designated list, and then the collections process. So the guide to administrative procedures is actually putting into writing some more detail around what the policy said. We've not actually had something in writing related to that. As a part of that, the lost property is sort of an area that had lots of questions and things that we've talked through. And the policy refers to a list, but there really hasn't been something. So it says in the policy, except where designated otherwise by the board, superintendent, principal shall attempt to collect from students or their parents the replacement value of school property lost, damaged, or destroyed. So the question has always been, okay, where's the list? Which ones are exempt, which ones aren't? So it felt like we really needed to help with some clarification. Until last year, any lost or damaged property has been invoiced to the student or parent at basically its replacement value. So if you lose a library book, you lose a textbook, you lose your football pants, or, you know, those kinds of things, you're just charged, and it's assessed in your student fee statement every month based on that replacement value. Last year, we had the one-to-one initiative at the middle schools, and added to that policy language was except where designated otherwise. It was added to the policy, but we didn't necessarily put anything in writing to help explain, you know, where's that exemption, what is or wasn't charged? And so it made it difficult for the building administrators, teachers, staff to consistently and equitably implement the policy. So it felt like we really needed to designate what is and what isn't. So the GAAP document does include a chart to help provide some guidance for staff, parents, and students so that we know what charges will be if the property is lost, damaged, or destroyed. And the biggest change in this is related to lost property that includes some district technology items checked out to students now, similarly to the way we've always checked out textbooks and those kinds of things. Going into the middle school, it was pretty much we weren't going to charge for anything. As we've evaluated this first year, is there a balance where some of that maybe does occur or not? And what might that look like? And so a large group of people have had a discussion about this, including the policy committee, for quite a while now. And so this is sort of what it kind of looks like, open to discussion, and felt like the board needed to have an open discussion on this so that if it's approved, and when it's approved, this is what it looks like, and we can all sign off, and then staff and people actually know what that looks like and knows what to expect if something happens. So lost and damaged property, the chart itself designates the kinds of things that are typical lost property, the amount that would be charged, and if it's at an elementary, middle, high school, or virtual school level. Accessories and chargers, cameras, calculators. And I'll talk about the little AB here in a second, and then some of the uniforms and things. So this is very common, what our lost property list has looked like in the past. The things that are As and Bs, we've added too. And what the A would basically mean, lost or intentional damage is the only time that item would be charged. And the charge would be assessed really based on the building's administration determination that that damage or loss was intentional. They really meant to break that iPad, or they really meant to, you know. Then it would be charged at $75, which is basically 10% of the value of the device. If it has a B, which is kind of just right below the, for example, the computers, MacBook, and then right below it, it says it again with the B, that would be if they moved from the district and purposefully just didn't return the item. They just knew they were taking it, and they left the district. And then there was a request that maybe that should be at replacement value. Again, could be at the 75, it could be at the replacement value. We just need to know what that would look like and why. And those ABs were put next to computers, MacBooks, the instrument replacements, if I lost or, or, you know, something happened to my tuba, iPads, Kajits, and Kindles. So those are traditionally kind of the same-like devices or whatever. Whereas library books, textbooks, certain supplies, things, those would still be charged at the replacement value that is listed, as it's listed in the areas that are listed. So that's that piece of it. Bring up the next chart that has a little bit of what our history looks like from this year in the middle school. And Jerry's going to address that and some things that we've talked about, and then we'll circle back around and see what discussion items and questions y'all have.
So we promised you we would come and let you know of what was lost, stolen, repaired. And boy, did we have some aha moments. It's not really the iPad that's the problem. If you will look, and if you have children at home, you know, once I thought about my family, I thought this makes total sense. If you look at the first two things, that cord and that brick that goes into the wall, that is nearly $20,000 of replacement that we had to pay. That's where a lot of our money's going. So a few cases, we have it numbered out, the little green bag that it came in. The iPad too, yeah, $13,000. If you think about our investment of $2,490,000, 5,000 iPads, the reason it's 5,000 was this included the ones that we used with the high school last year in the pilot project, and then we used those again. So you can see where the money is going there. We also feel like we paid, we paid $99 for Apple Care. It's $33 a year for the devices. We felt like that was well worth our money. We ended up paying $5,292 for repairs. So these, the shock to me was the lightning cords and the bricks that go in the wall. Couple of things. So I asked my colleagues, how do you handle this? You know, because that gets very, that's a lot of money just on cords and those little... Some schools, and I would like your direction, if you'd like me to look into this further or not, some of them are now putting the vending machine in the hall where you could purchase additional ones if you wanted to do that. That's an idea. Don't know if the board wants to move in that direction or not. I know as we move to the high school next year, the thing I think we need to be aware of is that that cord is $80. That's a big chunk of change. This year, we did have some teachers that had, something had happened to their cord, and $80 is a lot of money to have to replace a cord. So we have worked with principals and decided that we will put a number of cords in your building, and the principal can visit with the teacher about what happened and can replace the cord for them if they feel, you know, that they could just replace it for free or how they would like to do that. So we'll move in that direction. I guess, what's your feedback on this?
Well, I just wanted to take a minute so that Vanessa and I could give some context to it. As Kathy mentioned, we've been talking about issues surrounding, not just this, but also kind of more broadly the fees and who gets charged fees and how, you know, who gets their fees waived and for what items. That's been an ongoing conversation we've had for several months now in policy. And we kind of reached a point with this particular issue that we didn't feel like we could make a recommendation to the board, just the two of us as board members on the policy committee, without some further input and a discussion in the meeting, particularly around the issue of charging for the intentional loss or damage of, or, you know, absconding from the district, which we've had happen, people moving out of district and just didn't, they just didn't return their device, without having this discussion at the board level because of the commitment that we made last year around the rollout. So Vanessa, I'm sure you have something.
Yeah, I mean, the whole purpose of the one-to-one device program was really to address equity in our equipment district-wide. And, you know, I do believe that's got to follow with accessories that go along with it. I mean, certainly, you know, if my daughter messed up her MacBook cord, next year she's going to be a freshman, she'll get one. That's something we could replace as a family. That's not true for all families in the district, and I want us to be mindful of that. The way that our students are going to engage with this equipment is going to be based upon how well we do making sure that everyone gets equitable access. And if losing your cord, or breaking your cord, or breaking your screen means that your family's on the hook, that will change the way that kids engage with these devices. They're breakable. I mean, you know, everything's breakable. I do believe that as a public school entity, we have a responsibility to ensure that students have access to a free, appropriate education. That's our duty. And I do think that that- And I do think that that goes along with being able to use equipment, resources, that kind of thing. You know, I do think that there were some really good changes made to this loss and damage document, things that we previously didn't waive. We're making changes to the way that we will waive certain fees for certain groups, and I believe that that's moving in the right direction. I understand that there is a financial burden that comes along with the district in providing this kind of technology, but I think that that's a burden we ought to take on as a board and not a burden that we ought to pass on to families unless we pass it on by taking a look at our fee structure. And at the beginning of the year, when you write the check, when you enroll your child in school, I'd be willing to pay an increased fee in order to ensure that people that can't afford fees, that would have those fees waived, have access to the devices and the things that they need. And so, if that becomes necessary for us to look at our fee structure, I'm much more in favor of that than I am in favor of creating an environment where you have to bring money to school to buy something out of a vending machine in order to get your device to work or go to the office and like, basically, you know, depending on who it is that talks to the student about, well, you shouldn't have broken that or whatever. I don't think we should set it up where you have to feel ashamed or feel bad if you're low-income in order to be able to get the needs met on a day-to-day basis.
I know, and I don't know if that's feeling ashamed, but I know when they first implemented it in KCK for students who probably intentionally destroyed it and, you know, they couldn't afford it, they did some type of community service. So, we had like a lot of students coming into, you know, maybe after school because they get out early, you know, come and do some office work in the elementary school, make copies or cut paper, you know, kind of a way to still, you know, they're work it off instead of having to worry about, you know, paying all this money and their parents trying to come up with the money. So, I mean, I think it's still a board, you know, us picking up the fee, but...
I do think that it is different. Like, if you leave the district and you just don't return it, I think being able to invoice someone for that, and then they have the option of sending the device back instead of writing a check. I mean, I do think that reclaiming property that has been loaned out is a very reasonable thing. I just worry, I mean, we did make a commitment. And, you know, I attended the rollout of the iPad initiative at Central and along with, you know, not very many families, but quite a few. And the most common question that people had was, okay, what happens when my kid loses this? What happens when my kid breaks it? Because they were worried, because many of those families, if that happened, would not have been able to write a check to cover the cost, and then they would have been on the hook.
And I think it's fairly good news as to how many repairs and breakage that we had. We were very pleased with that. We were just shocked at the cords and bricks.
It does seem we're managing it well. So, it's not like this is a huge issue that we're not going to be able to budget for.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
Have we talked to other districts that are already adding one-to-one with more of a computer device, a laptop of some sort, and gotten any indication of how many cords they're losing? Because it doesn't really separate the same way, right? It's one solid...
Right. And so, what we hear is we don't lose as many of those cords as we do the iPad cords. We're hoping that holds true. And you know, when we talked to other districts last year about the breakage, we were all really concerned about that, and our numbers really pan out with everyone else too. So, I'm hoping that's the case with those cords.
And just anecdotal, right? I mean, iPhone chargers all the time.
Yeah, I do too.
As I say, it doesn't seem to, this reflects what normal procedure. I mean, with this type of technology, it seems, and so, did we look at what the, and I know we looked at like the iPad itself, the repairs and damages percentages and what to expect. Did we look at the cords and the bricks? What?
I think it's just lost a lot of...
I meant the percentages, comparing the percentages against the other, you know, other districts in terms of what?
No, and we hadn't really talked to districts about cords.
Because I just wonder if this, I wonder if this is par for the course. So, I mean, this may just be the cost of doing business, yes.
Yeah. I mean, many districts do charge. Like, when I, because when we had this discussion, you know, I kind of was looking for research articles, like what's best practice? And having a charge associated with it does decrease loss somewhat. And a lot of districts charge full price. They loan it out to you, and if you don't return it, then that full bill is, but I just, we're not like most districts in the way that we try and operate. And because this was originally done in order to address equity, I think it would be completely not appropriate to forget that when we talk about how we're going to charge for a loss or even damage. I mean, I don't know.
And we strongly recommend you leave your cord at home so that you always have your cord at home. And then we have other places that you can charge if you run out during the day. So, and we will even more strongly recommend that at high school because that cord is pricey.
So, there's kind of a couple of different issues going on here that I think that the finance and IT are trying to solve. One is what do we do about those devices that just don't get returned because a student keeps it on purpose? And my sense from what I've heard in the comments is that we're okay with charging replacement value for those when they don't return them on purpose, like they move out of the district and take their iPad with them.
You know, I think if, obviously, we have situations that may be very strange, right? And so, like if it was a situation where due to domestic violence, they had to move to a safe home or something and like, it just didn't, you know, and then it got lost, hopefully you could petition, and then that would be something that we would waive, you know? But I think in general, in a general case, yeah, if you don't return it and you move away, then we should bill you for it or you should get it back to us somehow.
So, then what about those cases where a student is still in our district, but they just don't return it because they lost it?
Well, that's a different question, right? Losing it versus what we're sort of saying is intentional, you know, intentionally taking...
Right. And I guess, I guess the issue here is, is at some point with that kind of discussion, somebody has to determine intent.
I feel like, you know, along what Vanessa was saying, along with the issue of equity, if we did that, we should have a situation, a special circumstance situation where someone can petition, like, I don't have the money, what can I do from that point?
Kathy, you want to address that? So, we have, we are, we've already got that in place. So, these are, the only time we would charge for the device, the MacBook, the iPad, et cetera, is really if there was truly an intentional loss or damage or they just moved away. And we would rely on the building administrators to help us evaluate that circumstance. It would not just be, the teacher said that, that there would have to be sort of a review process before it would get on the bill. So, it's not going to be billed unless some of that occurs. If the parents want to dispute that, we have the ability to do that. Or if there's a hardship circumstance, we have the ability to do that through a hardship waiver form or disputed lost property form. So, we have those mechanisms in place if for some reason they disagree with the decision that was made. So, those would both be there. And really, those are for a large part of the technology. The only fee that's sort of in there that's maybe a little more on a routine basis versus the only lost intentional would be the $5 or $10 for the cord, which is not full value. It's just a percent of what that would be as sort of a nominal. Again, that could be a hardship circumstance. We have other people with lost property that have, you know, it's a hardship, they file the hardship waiver request, it's evaluated, and those can be waived in that regard. Or there's a disputed circumstance and we would review that for that. So, there are those mechanisms in place to evaluate the circumstance and allow for it to be taken off their statement if for some reason there's more to the story than what maybe was originally known.
And those are about 10% of the value.
Right. I mean, this is where I'm at. So, out of 5,000 iPads, we did not have 27 returned for one reason or another. And so, how many MacBooks are we looking at giving out?
So, that'd be 3,000?
Something along there. So, the devices themselves don't seem to be the problem. It's really those small items, which is why that fee wasn't with an A or a B. It can be changed. It could be a smaller nominal value. It could be something different. That's just the starting point that we opened up for discussion.
So, I guess with that, knowing that, I don't know that we need to worry too much about what, like who's going to determine if it's really lost or if it was sort of taken. I feel like that might not be something we really need to worry about as much.
Other than there should be a statement that, you know, that it does exist, and if it's evaluated to be such and somebody threw it down and purposefully...
And you already have a mechanism to evaluate if it's...
We'll work with the principals to be able to do that. You know, if it's really intentional, it's probably something that got reported to the office. There's probably a disciplinary action form. There would be some communication to...
You have 27 cases of it already, right?
Would the, getting a new device be the same regardless? So, say you intentionally broke it and you're going through some sort of process to get assessed a fee versus you accidentally drop it and it's broken? Would you get a new one immediately regardless or get a new one that day in the library? No matter what?
That has been our practice. We've tried not to humiliate or, you know, that has been the practice.
And if you lose your charger, even if you're assessed a fee, you get a new one so you can keep it charged regardless, and then that whole process works kind of in the background? Yeah?
What we would envision potentially, because obviously, you don't want the teachers necessarily to take on lots of money in the classroom. You kind of want it to be, and we would need to work with the buildings, whether the teachers have some there in the classroom they can give and then email the bookkeeper to say, you know, student A lost and I had to hand it out. Or whether they go to the office during their passing period because they discover it's lost and somebody can give them a new cord, and then the student fee gets assessed on their statement at that time. So, making it not so pointed out and whatever, but just allowing it, different venues to be able to deal with what they need to, so they're not without.
I imagine that we really didn't have much interaction in the way of lost cords until it actually came the day when they all turned in, their devices came. I mean, is that, was that really the experience? I'm sorry, Jerry, you were distracted. So, my question was, you know, with the, with this, you know, 1,008 lost charging cords for iPads, we probably didn't really know what that number, that that number was so high until it came to that last Friday of school when they turned them all in, right?
That is correct.
Because probably if it was like my house, they're using my phone cord or their dad's or their brother's...
That's right.
...to charge the device when they couldn't find their own. So...
Right. And I do think that that's another reason why probably more of those go missing is because they're ubiquitous. You can use them for lots of other things, whereas the MacBook charger, it's not like, if you kept it or lost, you know, it's not like that would be beneficial in your life.
Right. It'll be interesting to see if the Mac, if we have a much lower instance of MacBook cords going missing when devices, because you can't use them to charge your phone.
Right. So, are you comfortable with the amounts that are in that column? Are those okay or not? Or what are...
In the chart to the right, the ones that would be assessed where it says replacement value is that, because we do need to know that those are...
$5, $10 no charge. What?
And really, the reason that they're asking for a decision about this now is that this needs to be in place before school starts and before we start handing out devices.
So, $75 MacBook, you know, assuming that like, we're not, we don't think that you took it intentionally, that could be waived for somebody who met criteria that needed it to be waived. And that's how we're practicing now, and so...
Yes, it is.
Okay. I was trying to clarify.
What's the disparity, though, between if you lose a Dell computer versus a MacBook, you pay 10 times more?
See, that's a virtual school thing.
Oh, okay.
It's a virtual school, and sometimes that's the only way for them to get the device back. So, they bill it at full, and then typically, they get those and most of them come back and they don't actually, some people actually want to keep it and buy it. But, you know, they have a harder time because they're all over the state, and so, that sort of gives them a oops moment, and then they bring it back.
So, real quick, the lost or damaged USD 497 property, see lost property table, if you, in the attachment that we got, so page two and three, that is listed under the not waivable fees or charges. So, I think that that's an error? Is that an error? Or is that different?
What can we put?
What have you, that $75?
Right. So, it lists the student type and then the waiver, and then the fees that are waived and the fees that are not waived.
Automatic waiver, just because you're free and reduced. But it could be waived if there's a hardship waiver form that's turned in for lost property. And that's how we do library books and anything that's lost property. So, it's not automatically waived just because you're a free and reduced student. But if you're in a circumstance in which you're not going to be able to do something with the library books, and those are turned in through the hardship waiver process.
Can we change that on that last column and just say fees and charges not automatically waived with, you know what I mean? It makes it seem as though it's not waivable at all, like there's nothing we can do.
Or a little asterisk.
I think there's an asterisk that maybe says hardship waiver is an option, but it may not be as visible as it should be, so we can sure adjust for that. Yep.
Oh, okay. It's hit one at the last bullet. Okay.
I think it's at the very bottom, but I can make that more visible in there. Yeah.
And so, again, at this point, just to clarify, they lose their device, they come in, they say, I've lost my device. They get a new device while all this other stuff goes on with their filling out of the wave, you know, whatever, to try and get the fee waived, et cetera. They still have a device the next day.
Right.
Okay.
And then all of them have tracking software, right? So, like if it gets plugged in and it comes online again, we can find it and say it's actually at this address, and they can get it back to us, and then the whole process would end as soon as the device was returned. Right.
Is there anything else?
I would say the other thing is, is sometimes, you know, they'll get assessed and then they turn around and say, well, I found it. And, you know, if they come back and they find it, well, they'll be refunded. So, we do that as well, and we have that happen a lot with lost cords.
I guess my last point, and we talked about this a lot in the policy committee, and I think we tend to agree that to whatever degree as a district, we can take on the financial burden of getting an education, we ought to, right? It's the state responsibility. It's not a family responsibility. And so, keeping those fees as low as possible for parents even that they can pay, we believe that it's best done through good tax policy at the state and that it is a responsibility of the state and a responsibility of our district. And so, however, we can make movement towards that idea that you come to school, we provide you with what you need, and there's limited, I mean, obviously, we want kids to be responsible, but accidents happen, we understand that, and we don't want to penalize children for being kids and interacting with their equipment that they need in order to be able to learn. And so, that's kind of a general value statement, and I don't know to what degree that can be incorporated in all of this. But I do believe since this is a slight change from when we initially did one-to-one with iPads at the middle school, this says there is some skin in the game that families have with these devices. We need to communicate that really clearly and make sure that people understand, especially returning families who got a device last year under the old policy that we made about there is no fee for families, please don't feel like obligated to deal with this. It's got to be communicated clearly, and I want the waiver ability to be communicated clearly along with it. We want kids to know that they should feel comfortable coming to school using these devices, and we will not shame them if they have an accident or a mistake because those happen naturally. Okay.
And I do think it's really important that that message, that we're not talking about the case where the kid drops it off the desk by accident. We're talking, what we're trying to write policy around is those cases where it's intentional and we're trying to have some logical consequences for that intention, like the cases where we've had somebody move out of the district and just take the device and provide some incentive for that to not happen, which I think is trying to balance those values. And I agree with Vanessa. I mean, we do, we have had a lot of conversations about fees and the values that we are trying to enact through policy around those. I think there's, there are places that we can definitely make some further progress in that. You know, we stopped charging fees for things at the middle school level a couple of years ago. We still have quite a few fees at the high school level associated with a variety of classes. I think if, you know, going forward as, as our finances hopefully continue to improve, that we can revisit that discussion and make some progress in, you know, putting those values into action in that area because it is a bit counterintuitive that you'd say you have a free, appropriate public education, but oh, by the way, if you want to take this art class, we're going to charge you $100 for materials. Well, that's going to mean that there are some set of students who will choose not to take that class. So, I think we will continue to have those conversations and work on that.
Right. And I do think layering on our C A 3 T and our special education understandings, if a student has an emotional disturbance diagnosis and breaks their iPad because they're mad, we need to take that into account and not make that a shameful experience for that person.
And that's actually required under, if a student has an IEP and there's some incident like that, there's a process, and I'm sure Kevin... there's a process, and I'm sure Kevin could speak to this more clearly than I can. But my understanding is there is a process by which the consequence for that is evaluated through the lens of the IEP.
Making sure that all classroom teachers and parents and everyone that's supporting understands that, too, I think is important. But, right.
And I do like the idea that Melissa mentioned, you know, maybe to offset that intentional, there is a circumstance where we don't charge the family, but they do come in for a community service or something kind of trade with that, just to learn some of those consequences of behavior.
Service learning kind of experience. And that's something that we could have some further conversation about in policy?
That, or even with the principals as we talk about how they would report that.
I hate that idea. I'm sorry, Melissa. I just feel like if you're looking at privilege right there, right? So you have families that can write a check, and if you don't, then you have to come work it off? Like, no, like I absolutely...
True for everybody, though.
Oh, I see. So anybody that breaks a device, regardless of if someone writes a check or not, I could see that being more palatable.
No, I didn't mean to make it...
Thank you.
But I go into that idea of behaviors have consequences. So perhaps the intentional, right?
Sure, I know. I just... You hear about school districts that have kids like clean up for lunch if they have free lunch, and nothing gets my boy a little more.
It's the lunch shaming thing where, oh, if you can't pay for your lunch, we're going to make you... Yeah, no, we don't do that here.
Applying that to devices would not be that different, but...
Right.
I'd make my kid go mow the lawn, so you know. It's some behavior thing.
Okay, are there additional questions on this? Okay, there is a motion, a recommended motion, if someone should choose to make that.
I move the Board of Education approve the adoption of the referenced GAAP provision effective July 24, 2017.
Second it.
Yes.
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 One more quick thing I meant to add before we voted, but just to remind the public, when we had the conversation around the iPads last year, we did say that we would revisit this based on the experience that we had this year. And so I appreciate that the information that we had tonight kind of laid out for us what that experience looked like so that we could make an informed decision about what to do going forward.
I wanted to add that the board did purchase the cases for the MacBooks. A lot of districts do not have a case. Ours goes over the edge. We think it will protect the screen. So I think we have a little more rugged case there for them, which should be helpful.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next report is the Superintendent's Search and Timeline with David Cunningham, Executive Director of Human Resources and Chief Legal Counsel.
Well, good evening. The... As the enclosure points out, you really have two options. You can decide to have the HR department pursue this search, or you can hire an outside firm to do it. We would be providing some support to the firm. They would be doing the majority of the work in that area. They have, obviously, different sorts of resources in order to advertise and seek out qualified candidates for a superintendent position. The other piece that you would need to think through is what is the timeframe in which you would like to hire this person so that then the HR department or the firm can back into some of the early things that are required? The enclosure lays out a sort of a sample timeframe in which things could be done in order to commence the search. So really, we're looking for direction from you this evening as to how you want to proceed and what kind of timeframe you would like to conclude the process. So if you, for example, were to choose a firm, then as I'm contacting those firms, the closure it says tomorrow, but I'm out of the office tomorrow, it'll be Wednesday, then I would be able to tell them the board would like to make a decision on a superintendent in this month or whatever. So this is just kind of a format to give you an opportunity for discussion around how you want to proceed and the timeframe in which you choose to proceed.
I'm assuming the timeline you have here is not only the recommended timeline, but also kind of fits into superintendent searches in general?
In general terms, it would, and it's very similar to what you have done in the past.
When I reached out to Dr. Dole, our former superintendent, who works at K-State with superintendents, he suggested, after talking with several of his colleagues, that hiring in February was probably a good idea. And I don't know if... It would seem if someone's giving that advice, that that might be better than March, given, you know, we don't want best candidates snapped up early. I mean, so... And Marcel, you reached out to KASB directly and talked to them. They agreed with February.
There was a similar answer that Dr. Dole gave us.
I think we have enough time that if we wanted to move up a bit, we could at this point, so...
I would be in agreement with that.
Unless you have a justification for March that makes more sense?
You did it in March last time, and so I just sort of just took the pattern.
Yeah, I think we were... We felt a little rushed in the process and did have some concern about whether... And we did have one candidate in our final pool that did take a job elsewhere. So before we had an opportunity to complete the interviews. So, yeah, I think moving that up to February makes a lot of sense. I'll just start. I think that... I think we need to hire a search firm. And I think that, you know, we learned some things from our last experience with the search firm. But I do believe that the work involved is such that our staff here already have full-time work that they need to be doing. And I'd rather have them be focused on supporting that process rather than running that process. But I'm open to...
And I do think hiring a search firm also provides the benefit of casting a wider net generally because they have contacts and can kind of shop our job out there. And I think especially given the candidate that we're looking for and the characteristics that we're going to have our community help us develop, we want a wide net.
Yeah, I agree. We should hire a search firm, just a different one than the last one. But, no, I thought that, you know, the process done right was, I think, relieves a lot of burden on the staff, but it also gives us a lot of information I didn't, wouldn't have expected to receive, as well as a really pretty broad variety of... I mean, my concern was it's going to be only people from Kansas, but that's not the case. I mean, we had them from, you know, all the surrounding states. So I thought it was a good experience.
Overall.
Overall.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Me, too.
All right, so I think the direction is we'd like to hire a search firm. In terms of the list of firms that we would be sending out RFI's to, do you have that list completed already? Are there additional firms that we would add over and above the ones that we reached out to?
There were three. There were... Let me grab my list. Here we go. You considered three other firms, KASB, Ray and Associates, and School Exec Connect. The firm that you did not consider last time that would be on a recommended list would be Hazard, Young, and Atia Associates. They did the search for Dr. Dole back in '09, I think.
And they were available... They were unavailable last time. They were busy with other searches, so when we put out an RFI, they declined.
Okay.
So I would anticipate contacting those four firms. There are other firms that are out there if you wanted a broader reach than just those four. These are well-known firms. School Exec Connect is a little younger than the other three in terms of superintendent searches. I think they've been around for about five years now.
Okay.
But they did a presentation before you for the last search as well, so you would be familiar with them, as did Ray and KASB. Hazard, Young, and Atia would be a new one if they have the capability of doing it.
Does everyone feel comfortable with that process?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we'll give these folks a call and commence the procedure on Wednesday.
Do you need us to make the motion? Okay.
Do you have a timeline for when you would like the RFI to be returned? Did I? Or...
August 14, in time for us to review and discuss at our August 14 meeting? Is that...
I would anticipate we could do that. If not, I'll have Anna inform board officers, but I would anticipate that could be done.
Okay.
Again, it depends on their workload as to how quickly they can turn an RFI. But as you may recall, they were all pretty similar. And so I wouldn't anticipate any major difficulty in getting that.
Okay, yes.
Well, I just wanted to talk for a minute about the timeline, given the fact that Marcel and I will no longer be sitting up here. Hopefully, Melissa will be. I've been fairly public about my support that I hope people elect her. But I do think as we talk about, you know, the people making the hiring decision will include at least two new people. And incorporating the school board candidates in the process up until that turns over is important. Depending on how... If we are screening potential candidates in November, December, in preparation for interviews in January and hiring in February, it may make sense for... Since we know in November who's elected, it may make sense for those members who are elected to take their seats early and for Marcel and I to... Not to kick you off early, Marcel, but to resign in order for, you know, that whole process to complete with the same people. So we might want to discuss that or talk about that. It may be challenging for new board members to take their seat and midway through a process, plug in, unless we do a good job of keeping them incorporated in some of those committee meetings and things.
So I think there's...
But I think we should deliberate about that. I'll stop talking so you can't...
No, I think there's opportunity in terms of the public involvement that we have in the process for interested candidates to participate in that. What we can't do is allow them to participate in executive session discussions about it until they are actually sworn in.
Right.
But that is, I think it's important to keep that in mind. And we can communicate to whichever firm we hire that we want them to ensure that the public input they receive, they are seeking it from those individuals, so...
And I guess I would, like for the public that is watching and for the candidates that are engaged in this process, I mean, obviously, there's any number of mechanisms that we can use going forward.